At 7 o'clock, I would like to call the public hearing of October 8, 2019 to order. The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Plainfield, Connecticut will conduct a public hearing at the Plainfield Town Hall Auditorium, 8 Community Avenue, Plainfield, Connecticut, on Tuesday, October 8, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. to discuss the proposed amendments to Ordinance Number 76, Ordinance Number 111, Ordinance 112, and the proposed Ordinance Number 125. So tonight, what I'll do is I'll address each ordinance separate, and then if there's any questions after each ordinance, we'll open it up to questions and move on to the next ordinance. So Ordinance Number 76, an ordinance concerning registration and inspection of structures containing multiple dwelling units. This proposed amendment removes and amends the language from the original Sections 3 and 5. All Sections have been renumbered. Section 7 becomes Section 5, and Section 12 becomes Section 9, and addresses a change in the fee structure. So tonight, I do have Paul Yellen, who can speak regarding this ordinance change.
I wasn't really prepared to come up here tonight. Our disordnance was enacted back in 1985 as a result of a multi-fatal fire, I believe, in Warrid, where we had two children die. And, of course, the investigation, it was found that there was no smoke alarms in the house. There was obviously quite an uproar about that, as you could certainly understand. The administration at that time put together this ordinance, and it was passed, as it says here, September 8, 1985. The ordinance hasn't been touched since then. When the ordinance was originally written, there was a clause in there for registering your tenants with the building official office. We have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of apartments in town. That is unmanageable. It's unnecessary for the building official's office and the fire marshal's office to know who all your tenants are. We don't need to know that. That's one of the sections that's been removed. One of the other sections that has been altered is the fee structure. In 1985, $15 was a pretty fair amount to get, to have a person go to your house, do an inspection, write a report, issue a certificate of occupancy for that apartment saying it's safe for you to put tenants in there, and then come back and process it. The change in this ordinance takes the fee structure out of the ordinance and places it between the building official's office and the Board of Selectmen. Between those two offices, they will determine what the fee is. Now, whenever you wanted to change the fee, you would have to come back and rewrite the whole ordinance, which is, which is kind of cumbersome. The other change is, I believe, in Section ...
Well, if you would like, if it makes it easier for you, I can go through the list of changes, and then if there's any questions, if that would make it easier.
Yeah, the other, yeah, we did remove ...
Section 5 we removed?
We did remove Section 5, which indicated that the building official's office will make forms available to register your tenants. Removed Section ...
8.
8, requiring the notification be done within three working days. Not really practical. And removed, again, Section 3, which was the registration of the, of the tenants. We don't need to know that stuff. What we do need is to have landlords contact us for the inspections. Right now, we have a very low percentage of landlords that contact us for these inspections. It is, it is a great document for a landlord to have if he should have a problem with a tenant. Tenant is being evicted, the tenant has problems, the tenant always calls our office or the building office to say, "My apartment is a mess. It was a mess when I moved in." We then go to the file, bring out the CO, and say, "It's not entirely the case." So we've been able to sell that to a lot of landlords, but a lot of landlords don't know about this. Periodically, we will send letters out to landlords reminding them, but as properties change hands, that information isn't passed along to the new owners. Just, you know, for a little tidbit of trivia, so far this year-to-date, we've only done 15 apartment inspections. Last fiscal year, we did almost 50 apartment inspections, and we have hundreds and hundreds of apartments in town. So part of our ongoing thing is to get more education out there to the landlords. The ordinance essentially stays the same, just some technical things, and the whole basis of it is to try to improve the safety of our apartment dwellers in town.
So the other thing to add to that, because of some of the elimination, Section 4, due to Section 3 being eliminated, will now be Section 3. Section 6 will now become Section 4 because we eliminated 3 and 5. And Section 9 will actually become Section 6. Section 10 will become Section 7. Section 11 will become Section 8. And Section 13 will become Section 10, and that was because of the eliminations of any of the items that Paul just spoke about.
Thank you.
So are there any questions? So if you have a question, again, just take your name and your address, please.
Kevin Cunningham, 405, Mr. Panro. The anticipated fee schedules that you're going to be utilizing within the offices, is it comparative to the other towns?
What we're going to be doing is, we did a, the office did a survey of some of the surrounding towns for what they do for fees. It ranges from roughly $40 to, I forget what some of the other numbers were. I don't have that.
Is it based on square footage?
No, no, no.
What they do in houses? I mean, people rent houses all the time.
Um, I believe it's, it's in Section 2, two or more rental housing units.
So what is the difference if somebody's renting their house out in an apartment building?
You know, that's, uh, there's, when you look at the scheme of things, there's fewer number of single-family houses that are rented as opposed to multi-units that are rented, duplexes and up. So the fee schedule ranges from $40 for a HUD inspection all the way down to $10 for a renewal of an inspection form. So, you know, we'll, you know, establish something that's reasonable. You know, we don't want to have the fee to the point where it's going to turn off landlords and not have us call, have them call us. But on the other hand, you know, it, it costs us time and effort and money to get out there to do these inspections, particularly if we find violations, then to have to go back again to do a follow-up to make sure that it's safe, you know, before people are in the apartment. And, in all honesty, we've never had a major problem or a major incident in any apartment that we've done one of these inspections on, in my 30-plus years here.
Is it something that the town can look at, some people who rent houses, to have that?
They can all, you know what they, you know what that person can do? That landlord can call and volunteer to have their place inspected. You know, and it's a good, and it's a good piece of paper to have.
It really is.
You know, so whenever somebody says, "Hey, you know, can I have my apartment or my house inspected in accordance with the ordinance?", I said, "If you want to have it done, absolutely. Be glad to come on."
Yes, sir.
A comment and a question. As the Housekeeper, this ordinance strikes me as something in planning and zoning. The members on that board would have needed knowledge to chime in on, but there's planning and zoning meeting going on right now, so they can't be here. Otherwise, I just had a simple question. How many times have we actually found a landlord under the old ordinance in the last decade?
Ever.
Never?
Ever.
Thank you.
And just in response, Mr. Reel, we do have planning and zoning here tonight.
In the basement?
No, right here in the front row.
Excellent. So there is no current meeting going on right now because the schedule set it at 7:00?
There is a meeting downstairs, but we have a member of planning and zoning here also.
So not the entire planning and zoning is here, but some?
No.
Probably some.
No. But you don't need the entire planning and zoning.
I understand that, but I think it would have been helpful. That was my point.
Thank you. This is not a town meeting. This is a public. There will be a town meeting where there will be a vote.
Okay, fair enough. Fair enough, that's my point.
Going once? Going twice?
June Gack, City Village. I have a question. How is it going over at Sunny Acres? Has those alarms kept going off all the time? Have you been able to take care of that?
Well, it's obviously not related to this, but we have, uh...
I'm just curious while you're here.
Can I answer the question? Yeah. Sunny Acres has put some barriers in between the front apartment and the back apartment, which has altered the airflow from the kitchen to that smoke alarm there, and our alarm and our false alarms have dropped drastically over there. It's been a tremendous help. Thank you.
So are there any ...
Yep.
Does this ordinance, does this apply, I want to say, more meaning to the apartments that are going to be HUD?
No. This has nothing to do with the HUD program.
Okay. So when those are inspected, that's a separate?
It's a totally separate, it's a different type of inspection.
Okay.
The HUD inspection, the short form is seven pages, the long form is 21 pages. It's a totally different level of criteria for inspection. This follows basic building codes, basic fire codes, and basic health codes. It doesn't get into the detail that the HUD inspections are required to get into. For example, the HUD inspection, are there screens on the windows?
Right.
You know, for this kind of thing, we don't care about that. We care about smoke alarms, carbon monoxide detectors, you know, no hazards in the building that's going to, you know, endanger the people. Yes, Dan?
That just made me think of something else. Hypothetically, in your professional opinion, if some apartment failed a HUD inspection, would they fail to pass, say, this inspection for the same common reasons?
Typically, when we do a HUD inspection, because it's more involved than this inspection, we consider the HUD inspection to be an apartment inspection because it's a higher level of criteria that the apartment has to, has to reach.
So they're checking water and stuff like that? But, I mean, I think my question is, do they check the same fire code stuff?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yes, and I do the HUD inspections also. So, yeah, it's the same fire code, except the, as I said before, the inspection is much more detailed than this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So do we have any, any?
Yes.
Do you have a question about the sections that were taken out? Can we, where can we find those? Because you didn't leave them in, so we could read the sections that were taken out.
You can get a copy of the original ordinance if you'd like.
Where?
We can provide that for you.
Town Clark?
Um, no, you can come to actually the building official, and we can make copies for you. Okay.
Either that or you come to my office, I can get it for you. Eat a little.
Okay.
So are there any other questions regarding Ordinance 76? If not, we'll move on to Ordinance Number 111. So the proposed amendment for Ordinance Number 111, this proposed amendment changes Section 1 and Section 3 to allow the first selectman and his or her designated to approve driveway permits as opposed to the town engineer as it currently reads. So this was last updated in 2006, and in the first sentence of Section 1, it will change, the town engineer will change to the select, selectman's designated agent. Section 3, the first sentence, town engineer, will also change to the selectman's designated agent. The only other thing that is changed on there is the update of the effective date, and it will include the new selectman to that ordinance. So we have planning and zoning here. If you have any questions regarding that, Mary Ann Chanati can answer that for you.
Isn't there a planning and zoning meeting going on right now downstairs?
There is a planning and zoning meeting going on downstairs, but there is a representative here from Planning and Zoning who would, who handles this, who is in the office, she worked for Planning and Zoning. Planning and zoning downstairs is a commission. They are not employed by the Town of Plainfield.
Okay, that's entirely relevant because they too would have something to say about this, which seems to be a zoning issue. You know, my concern is there's, there's some technical specifications. Quite frankly, I don't think we've ever had a Board of Selectmen in the driveway business. The bonding is $2,000.
It does not say the Board of Selectmen. It says the designated agent.
Or their designated.
That the selectman can designate.
In other words, that's where the buck stops. And so, in other words, we've got another bonding requirement, $5,000 for multiple driveways, plus another provision, for an instance, with a $2,000 cash bond. I'm concerned, and I guess the other concern, concerning how we just dealt with the last ordinance, are we voting on these all as a block? Or are we voting on the piece still?
So this ordinance is already in place. We are amending Section 1 and Section 3. That is the only thing we are amending tonight. We're here to talk about. There will be a vote at a future date, and that is when we will change only Section 1 and only Section 3. This ordinance has been in place since 2006.
And do we know how, let them vote, take a question? Or that has to be scheduled?
It has to be scheduled at the next Board of Select, Selectman meeting, which is the 15th of October, I believe.
Okay, good, so we have time to think about it. Thanks.
So are there any other questions? Yes?
I don't understand why the ...
Your name and address.
Kathy Bosley, 300 Stock with the Road. Why is the engineer not qualified to do this anymore?
So the engineer, so, and Mary Ann, maybe I will answer, and then if you would like to. So in the ordinance, it states an engineer. The Town of Plainfield has not had an engineer on staff for many years. So when I came into office, what we did is we have contracted with an engineering firm, and planning and zoning, there is no engineer there, and neither one of them want to put their name on something that states that they are an engineer because they are not. It costs about $300 to have an engineer come out and look at a driveway that is as simple when the, when the plans are reviewed with planning and zoning. They are qualified for that. So that is why we're taking out the town engineer.
So you're saying you're going to have an engineer do this? It makes it sound like the Board of Selectmen are going to do this, or somebody from the Selectment's office is going to do it.
No. It will, I can designate someone from planning and zoning to do that. It's not me that will be doing that.
Yes, I would prefer that you not do that.
I would prefer that also. Mary Ann, would you like to speak on that?
The only thing I'd like to add, Mary Ann Chanati, Town Planner, is that when driveway permits come in, applicants have to wait until they get sent to the town engineer, and they schedule it for inspection and review. And that can sometimes take two or three weeks, as opposed to if a staff person reviews the application, that could take a matter of days. So that's cutting the wait time for construction.
But then, should the language say it's going to be designated into ...
Name and address, please.
Rainbow slate, 300 Stock with the Road? Then should the wording say who you're going to designate, or at least the department you're going to designate?
We can change that if you would like, yes. We can put in planning and zoning.
I think that's what's causing the question. It's just an open-ended statement.
Yes. The only thing is, if we want to designate an engineer to do it, so we can change the wording to be planning and zoning or engineer. Thank you.
Kevin Cunningham, I would agree with that. I think it makes it much more clear, so there's no question about what doing, what defense is.
Are there any other questions regarding Section 1 and Section 3 of Ordinance 111?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And a comment, if I may. Charlie Corson, 95, State General Row. These are, these changes in this amendment are quite welcome. It is quite a dubious experience going through, and I don't want to say too much about permits, but there are a lot of permits you have to take out in town to, to do anything. And what the Town Planner had brought up a few minutes ago exactly is something that happened to me. I had five building lots, so I went down to the Town Hall, and I applied for the permits, which at that time, the town was charging $50 per permit. And I had had the original thing all done by Dave Held of Provost and Rivero in Usopp, so I would assume there was nothing wrong with anything. Well, I didn't know that they didn't do it anymore. So they sent it out, the town sent it out to an engineer, which charges the town $300. And she came back that everyone had to be changed. I went back to my engineer. He wanted $400 to change, do the work to change it. And it seems like that this is a quite a welcome change, and it's a good change, and it's something I think that has been kind of standard for the last few years, where Louis, Louis, who was our former zoning guy, I think he did most of the inspections.
I believe he did, Mr. Corson.
And I think this is a, a good thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other? Yes?
... Now, if you do hire an engineer, or engineer that's designated to inspect, that cost can be transferred to the property owner? How do you call that?
So Mary Ann, if you will comment?
If it has not been transferred to the property owner or to the engineer, the town has absorbed that cost. We have not raised the cost for a driveway permit.
Okay.
And we don't have any intention of doing that. They've been $50, and the only reason that the town engineer inspects and that is because I'm not an engineer. My assistant, assistant Town Planner is not an engineer. So you wouldn't specify it right now that it has to be the town engineer to sign off on it. So we're not going to put our names on it now.
Right.
And so that's what, why this change is important.
Somebody qualified to inspect or run off.
Yeah, but I mean, when, for example, let's use Mr. Corson as the example, seeing he brought it up. He went through the subdivision process, okay? His engineer designed his subdivision with the driveways as they were proposed, and the slopes and the bridges and all of that. When it went through the process and it was approved, one would presume that it was approved with the existing site lands. We don't argue with an expert.
Right.
You know, I mean, when it goes through the process, the applicant's engineer provides paint. Our town engineer reviews the land. They go back and forth, and they end up being a line of rock, and they can be approved. And that's what we go about. So I can't, you know, I mean, it's, it's, in my mind, it's not fair to an applicant. It's a, it's a kind thing, in my mind, because previously, when Louis used to sign off on them, whether or not he was an engineer, that was, like I said, big, you know? And now we can take up the privilege of it, and it just, it slows the process down. And that's not our goal.
All right. As long as it began, it's a cost time transfer to the property.
Are there any other comments regarding that ordinance? So we will move on to the amendment to Ordinance 112. The proposed amendment changes Section 4 to amend the building permit fees and the demolition permit fees. These fees will now require approval by the Board of Selectmen. It also changes Section 6 to amend the dates that the tax collector shall file the delinquent taxpayer list with the building department. So in Section 4, so B, and I do have building officials here that can, can answer this after we go through it. Section B will now become Number 1. The building permit fees are calculated by the building official based on the estimated cost of construction. So this is the new verbiage that is going to be put in. Number 1 of Section 4 is new construction and alterations. The verbiage has changed, and the dollar amounts have been eliminated. Number 2, demolition of Section 4. Again, the verbiage has been changed and the dollar amount eliminated. And in Section B, now that will read, "The fees shall be presented to the Board of Selectmen for approval." And in Section 6, where it changes the dates from August 1st to August 2nd, and February 1st to February 2nd. So on February, on August 1st and February 1st, that is not a true delinquent list of your taxes, your taxes, because people can still come in on August 1st and February 1st and pay their taxes. So we're just changing those dates to August 2nd and February 2nd, because that is an accurate date to have a true tax delinquent list. So that's real easy. It's just changing those dates by one day so that we really do have the true tax delinquent list. So if there are any questions on Ordinance 112, Kyle Collins is here, and we also have Rob Curra, who was our previous building official here. So any questions?
Dan Reel Dorieff, this one is a major, major problem waiting to happen, and I would not want to be the town trying to explain this if we went ahead and ratified this severe mistake. Ordinance 112 repeals part of 6.971996. So in other words, the reading is always, we're taking away those, and we're reinstating the following language, in substitute lieu, if you would. Section 5 says, and it starts with, "In accordance with Section 29202 of the General Statutes." Now, here's the problem. 29202 of the General Statutes reads, and I'm not making this up, check your phones if you want to verify, because this is a real big mistake.
So can I just?
"Each passenger tramway used or intended for use in this state shall be constructed, equipped, maintained, and operated so as the transport passengers safely..." I'm not going to read the rest, but the fact that we've all missed this, this, the ordinance has been ...
So, Mr. Reel, I just want you to understand, we are not asking to amend Section 5. This ordinance has been in effect for many years. We're not changing Section 5.
Then we need to fix it.
So tonight, though, we are here just to discuss the sections that are pertinent to what we need to do right now. And again, and the same with the top part, that needs to stay because that was on the original, so every time you amend an ordinance...
Did you just say that that part needs to stay in Section 5, even though it says we're going to replace it?
No, no, no. The top part, where you said the following ordinances are repealed and replaced, every time you amend an ordinance, these are the original ordinances, we cannot take that off because that is on the original ordinance.
So we have to reference a statute that says, talks about tramways as the authority to enforce the state building code? That's absurd. Saying we need to fix it, that would be nuts.
Tonight, we're not talking about amending Section 5. We're, we're talking about ...
Well, we ought to.
Section 4, Section 6.
Unless you want to get sued. I mean, I, I think you get the point, but wow, we all missed this?
Well, when you do an ordinance, Mr. Reel, attorneys always review everything, so again...
Oh, God, then, did the attorneys review this?
Yes, they did.
Who's their malpractice carrier if we're going to pass this? I think you get the point.
Do you have your law degree, Mr. Reel?
I'll send it back to the drawing board. Don't deflect on that. It's a common sense area they should call. And it doesn't matter if you're an attorney, you'll be reading right English, too. The fact that you missed this is equal to an exception.
Tonight, we are not discussing Section 5. We're not here to amend Section 5. So are there any questions on Section 4 and Section 6? If there are no questions on Section 4 and Section 6... If there are no questions on Section 4 and Section 6, we will move on to the proposed ordinance 125. So ordinance 125 is concerning the management of stormwater. This is a new ordinance which establishes the Plainfield Board of Selectmen as the legal authority to protect water quality by prohibiting and eliminating illicit connections and discharges to the municipal separate storm sewer system, MS4, and to establish inspection, surveillance and monitoring to ensure compliance with the Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection General Prerent for the discharge of stormwater from small municipal separate storm sewer systems as amended within the town of Plainfield. So I know for some of you that have attended the meetings, um, we have talked about MS4. That is a state mandated, unfunded, um, that has been passed down to the town of Plainfield. And that is the main reason that we have had to contract to have an engineer and staff, to have an engineering firm on. So tonight I have Chuck Eaton here with me. He is from CME Engineering and he can discuss if anybody has any questions. This is a five-year project that will be completed by 2022. So if anybody has any questions or concerns, again, Chuck Eaton from CME, he's our engineer. He can answer any questions that you may have.
Dan Real, there we have, I do have a question. Actually two. Um, one, to what extent does DEP already do this? And two, what would this cost if we implemented it?
So, uh, I'm Chuck Eaton, I'm a town engineer. So, uh, DEP has implemented this based on EPA requirements. In other words, EPA mandated this and that's now required the state to do it. So the state's now requiring the towns to do it. The way this was determined, which towns are going to be MS4 towns, is strictly based on population. Uh, and it's a tiered type of system. Uh, the larger populations have to go through their MS4 first. Plainfield is a Tier 2, which has a smaller population, but is still within that population group. Um, so many, many, many towns in the state are required to do this. And including universities, it's all, it's all based on population. And what was your second question?
Oh, just, what would be the cost actually, you know, if we implement this ordinance? Like what, just round figures, you wouldn't have exactly. I'm just kind of curious, what would the cost if we adopted this life continuing on?
Sure, so this ordinance is part of an overall five-year plan like Cathy had mentioned. Uh, this is, this is one part of the overall plan. Uh, the state requires that you create an authority for a stormwater ordinance to oversee it. And you also have to have a stormwater ordinance itself, which states that you can't have a connection into a storm system that pollutes direct connections, this sort of thing, uh, that are going to impact impaired waterways of the town and of the state. So it's very, it's kind of difficult to answer that question. This specific ordinance itself, um, I don't, I don't think it would really, I don't think it's going to necessarily cost the town anything. But if it doesn't get implemented, the state can fine the town. Um, so that's, that's.
And I guess I just have one more follow-up, um, you know, and thank you, that's important information. We all definitely needed to understand this. I mean, I'm not a real evidence guy and I don't think anybody here is. Um, would the current authority anyway be in the wetlands commission? For just things of that wheelhouse?
Uh, no, because this really has a lot further reaching impacts than just the wetlands commission. Uh, you know, it has a lot to do with illicit discharges. Uh, so in other words, somebody connects their washing machine into their drainage system, which then goes into the town drainage system. You know, that, that may not be a wetlands, um, it may not have anything to do with the wetlands commission. Um, it has more to do with the town public works drainage system, maintenance of the drainage system, that sort of thing. Uh, it's the public works responsibility to maintain those systems and, um, you know, to monitor them. So it's, it's further reaching than the wetlands commission, but it will also involve the wetlands commission. So if you have, um, you know, development projects that are, that are located within regulated areas that go to wetlands, you know, then, then this storm ordinance would apply to that. Assuming that they're going to bring to a weapon or have it stormed.
Yeah, it just sounded like it wasn't a common area, but there was, there was some overlap. So I just wasn't sure. I thought other people here might, you know, understand that. Thanks.
Hi, Kevin Cunningham, I have a couple quick questions. Um, obviously the state's requiring us to do this on, for Tier 2, is there a cutout date by which we haven't had this completed by?
So the five-year plan, uh, everything is done in stages. So it's basically a, you have all these different parts that need to be implemented in a certain year. And we're, I think, you, you have to have the authority put together. I don't remember the exact dates in our plan, but, uh, we're, we're actually kind of doing two steps at once here by establishing an authority and adopting the ordinance. So, um, we're kind of killing two birds with one stone. Um, the authority does have to be established first and then kind of you have the ordinance next. Uh, that's how the state kind of allows you to do it. Um, we, you know, we've worked, Mary Ann's worked tirelessly on this here and, uh, you know, we're, I think we're saving the council money by just kind of getting it done at once.
All right, which is good. I just wanted to find out, other towns that have done this already for Tier 2, do they also have ordinances that are similar to this or are we comparing theirs?
Uh, so many towns have established their authority. And the ordinance that, they have ordinances that, so right now the town of Plainfield, stormwater ordinances are kind of wrapped up in, like Mr. Real was saying, with, in the wetlands and with planning and zoning. But they're, they're outdated and haven't been updated in a very long time. So this helps to update those requirements that the state has. And I haven't found a town yet who has fully implemented all of the EPA and state mandated ordinances. So this gets us much closer than other towns.
We'd be pretty much meeting in that area.
All right, Gagnon. About the authority, these other towns, who do they have as the authority? The board of selectmen? Because it seems to me, like Dan Real said, either inland wetlands, WPCA, you're just, you're creating a third party here to tell them what to do?
Sure.
Shouldn't they be the authority?
So all cities and towns, you know, one of the interesting things about Connecticut is that all cities and towns kind of govern themselves and they all work differently. So you can't have an ordinance or an authority, you can't have a, um, it's not one size fits all. So each one has to kind of develop their own based on the different departments they have within their cities and towns. So because this is such a far-reaching thing and covers so many different departments and commissions and boards, you really kind of need to have, you know, at least for Plainfield, for example, you know, you have to have kind of a higher level to oversee that. So, you know, like I was saying before, you're going to have things that have nothing to do with inland wetlands or nothing to do with planning and zoning, uh, but it has to do with public works. So you kind of, and then the opposite is true too. It might not have to do with public works, but it's really a inland wetlands thing. So you have to, you have to have someone kind of above them to oversee that. And a lot of different cities and towns have, uh, one department that all they deal with is stormwater. And, you know, the town just does not have the finances to do that. To have something like that, you know, you'd be looking at having a whole separate authority created just to deal with stormwater and then you're going to have to have some way of financing that. A lot of different towns have created, um, funding sources through that where, uh, residents get taxed on the amount of impervious area that they have on their property that contribute to the stormwater system, that sort of thing. And the town has decided not to, not to go back through and take use of the board of selectmen. So, sorry, that was a long answer. Yes?
One final one is on Section 3 illicit discharge. You've got the prohibition of illicit discharges and connections. Would enforcement for that would be through, currently through planning?
The, well, this is, this is why the board of selectmen is going to be the authority on that because it really, it, it's going to be somewhat case-specific. Uh, you know, what type of illicit discharge is it? Does it have to do with sanitary sewers? Um, you know, it could be a building type of issue. So it's, it's, it's going to, like I said, it's going to have to be handled at a somewhat higher level so that these duties can be handed out on a case-by-case basis. And I don't, Mary Ann, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
No, I think that's perfect. I mean, it's, if you put one specific department in charge of that, like, um, the engineer said, it could potentially impact something that has nothing to do with that department. Therefore, their knowledge would be less than where it needed to be.
I'm just talking about a starting point. In other words, someone calls us, like, I believe so-and-so has got an illicit discharge and you would be going out to take a look at it or would you just, you'd designate something else to do?
I would designate what department would need.
Just want to make sure, a clarification of that, that's all.
Okay. Are there any other questions regarding this ordinance for MS4?
I have a question. Did you ever find out about River Valley with the, was that a water issue? They were digging pipes and people were wondering if it was going to be connected?
That's for the connection, yes.
For water for those houses?
Yes. It doesn't need for those houses, that River Valley could stack the connection, yeah. Are there any other questions regarding this ordinance? Thank you, Chuck, very much.
Thank you.
So if there are no other questions, we will adjourn the October 8th public hearing at 7:43 PM.